Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. We're gonna start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks again for coming out on a nice night. Melissa Ferris will not be here this evening. We'll go and start with the approval of the agenda and the additions, additions and corrections. I have several. We're gonna remove E2, the rezoning condition use permits. Number two.
Uh, E?
No.
Under E2, just the rezoning condition use permit. The Prairie Willows final flat will remain.
Gotcha. So just the rezone.
Yeah.
Gotcha. We're gonna add a K4 under personnel, hiring of a library assistant, David Greenfield. And then we'd like, I'd like to move K1 personnel, under personnel, the personnel committee update. Like to move that to the closed session and then we'll provide an update on that after we reopen the meeting. Do you need to say what that's about?
Uh, if...
It's about the hiring of the electric supervisor position.
Okay.
So. And that's all I have right now. Teresa, anything?
Not anything different.
Okay, Dan?
So, I wanna add one item, just to go along with the public forum, uh, fact versus fiction thing I'd like to add.
What?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make that motion.
Thanks, Tony. Do you have a second?
Second.
Things made on favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Now, the consent agenda, things in your packet for that. Any questions for the administrator? None? I'm gonna take a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Dan, second?
Second.
Wayne, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Visitors to the council. Semcrup. It's great to see you back. As we said, come back as soon as you have some money, and you do.
And you have some money.
It's awesome.
You're a nicer.
That'd be better.
So, just a brief update on that. We were awarded the grant for seventeen owner occupied rehab houses within the city of Cassin. We're in the process of putting together implement, kind of operationalizing plans for that. And there's an environmental we have to do and some of that stuff, so we anticipate in a month or two we'll be back for approval on all the policies and procedures and some of that. But our purpose for tonight, uh, to be here is, um, two additional things other than delivering good news, which had already leaked anyways, so... Is to discuss and, um, uh, and approve, get a, get approval for the mayor to execute the administrative contract for the MIF revolving loan funds, which we're trying to convert to small cities' compliance requirements. So, and then the second item is to set a public hearing to designate Semcrup as the city's HRA. So, I'll talk about the administrative contract first. So, the city has, um, a pot of MIF funds that are in repayment and there are some, there's actually a balance on the city's books for that. There, my understanding is that the city is having, the compliance to do the MIF component of that is rather, um, complex and more intensive than converting to the small cities' requirements. So, in order for us to draw down the newly funded small cities' monies, we have to expend all of those funds first. So, we have a waiting list and survey respondents that are interested outside of the targeted area for the new small cities' monies and can start spending those as soon as we go through and get this administrative contract signed. And, um, we have a couple administrative things to do at the state to get those moved and get their approval on it. But, um, the first step is the administrative contract getting executed so that we can start spending down those monies. So, in your packet was a resolution for authorizing the mayor to execute that administrative contract and the administrative contract.
Any questions on that? We had discussed this before. This is that pot of money we had that you're basically turning back over? Or meeting the requirements of...
Right. And if, if they sat there too long, the state could recapture them, so they might as well get used to benefit residents or property owners. It's not just owner occupied. It could be a commercial building. So, we'll do some outreach to the property owners outside of the designated target area for the new grant. So, and then if anybody for, that was in the new grant would apply for those funds, we would say, no, we have another pool for you. So, we're maximizing all the funding.
Perfect. Questions?
No.
I'm gonna take a motion to approve the administrative process and contract.
I'll make that motion.
Tony, do you have a second?
Second.
Wayne, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously.
So, the designation on the HRA, as we are securing these new grant funds, we are taking steps to have cities designate the Semcrup as their official HRA, which, for two reasons. It legitimizes that business relationship and the administration of that new grant, and then it allows the city and the HRA to go after additional funds if they so choose to do so. So, example, we could establish a housing trust fund and the state, if the state has matching dollars, we could access that through the city, for the city and do additional housing-related projects.
Uh, Karen, is there an additional cost of cities?
So, there's no cost to do the designation itself. When, their cost would get in term, um, become more real if you had a specific project.
Okay.
So, if you guys wanted to establish a housing trust fund and there was matching dollars, we can, we would do that on a cost by cost, you know, project by cost basis and the cost would be determined when the details of the project are established. You know, it depends on the project.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? I think it takes the administrative burden off of the city staff for what we're doing right now. If we wanted to do something else, we'd certainly do that.
Yeah.
Like you said.
And this does not limit the city's powers to, to work outside of this agreement. If we chose, who chose? We chose to do that.
Yeah, correct.
Need to bop my tongue.
So, the first step in that whole process is setting a public hearing, which Teresa and I had kind of proposed for July 10th. And then as part of that meeting, it would be a resolution for consideration at that time with the designation. And then there's just a filing we have to do with the state, which there's no cost for that and we'll do that on the city's behalf. And then basically the, that's the entire process, so.
Okay. Any questions? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution setting the public hearing for July 10th.
I'll second that.
Yeah, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Post. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then at the July 10th meeting, I'll have more details about the new grant and timeframe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thanks for coming.
Public hearing, uh, public forum. Duane, do you have something there?
I'm gonna do those first and then I can do my...
So, Tom and Mike, uh, pretending to, mind your own way. Did you wanna, can we just move these to the time we're discussing that item? That, I can, that's okay. Unless you guys wanna speak now and we're just, have a round of discussion, you're welcome to come up.
Okay.
Okay, I, I've got a fact versus fiction. Um, this is, uh, and I, I wrote it down, so I might just read it. So, last week, Tuesday, June 4th, as everybody knows, a major hailstorm went through Cassin, leaving behind considerable amount of damage to homes in the Cassin area. Following this storm on Thursday, my name and my home phone number was hijacked and used in a spoofing scheme in what I hope was a failed attempt to convince area homeowners to enter into a potentially fraudulent service agreement to repair damages to their home. By my estimation, probably well over one hundred area residents were robocalled in this spoofing scheme, which falsely represented me and my phone number on the recipient's caller ID. Based on some feedback I have received from a number of people who called me, some not so pleasant feedback, but other feedback nonetheless, I would like to set the record straight and offer the following facts. Fact one, I do not own nor am I employed by a construction company that does home repairs. I am a forty-plus-year employee at the Mayo Clinic. Fact two, as a representative of the citizens of Cassin, I cannot and will not endorse any construction company to perform home repairs. I will only encourage those to buy local. I would also not ask anyone on my behalf to take these type of endorsements. Fact three, despite what I've been communicated to some via these phone calls, my wife and I are not expecting a baby and are extremely happy being grandparents.
Well, I think we, that's true. So, you're expecting, huh?
So, that's, that was the, they were calling and say, I was on my way to the hospital 'cause my wife was having a baby and they were calling on my behalf to set up appointments to view their property damage and enter in repair agreement.
Okay, wow. Takes all kinds. So, I hope that gets resolved because I had not heard that before. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Duane. If we, if we, any of us here, then we can shut that down.
Please. And that's why I wanted to make the public...
To tell your wife congratulations. Let's see here. Go to the committee reports. The EDA calling a public hearing for the new business subsidy agreement. That's in your packet. E1. What's the date on that? June 26th.
So, actually, I let Nicholas Jones pick on it. I'll give him a paper.
So, we're gonna call a public hearing for the new business subsidy agreement. Copy, that's in your packet there. That's just an updated agreement that took some stuff out that wasn't necessary for the different subsidies that the EDA might offer as well as public hearing on the 26th. Any questions on that or comments? I'm gonna take a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Dan, one second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, number two, planning commission, the final flat for Prairie Willows 4.
I did put that in front of you, and this is essentially the resolution from March of 2017 with the dates changed for the adoption date.
This had previously been approved, but expired, right? Any questions now that we ever read them?
No, Tony did a really good job of addressing some concerns of neighboring property owners.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Resolution passes. Thanks, Tony. To the administrator's report, Minnesota Energy Resources agreement.
And this is very preliminary. Minnesota Energy Resources had, so they want to do automatic metering. And so they would wanna put their meter-reading devices onto city poles. They originally thought in two locations in the city. We don't have a pole in their second preferred location, so they've gone back to the drawing board. When they have locations for two to three, I think they're called AMIs, Automatic Meter Reading Units, yeah. Then we will work with them to identify the appropriate poles to meter them so that we can charge them for the electricity. And then our pole fee is ten dollars a year for their pole rental. So, we will work with them when they have identified locations, those, um, to provide you with information ahead of time and if you have any questions, hopefully either I or Jared or the folks at Minnesota Energy Resources, we can get back to you with an answer.
They can read all the meters in Cassin, from street corner to places.
Yep. They just, like, within a mile radius, so they just had to go back to the... Go back to the drawing board. They were looking for, um, electric poles northwest, but all of our services are buried.
And we're gonna keep getting buried.
Yes. So, wow, yep. So, they were gonna have to do a little more research.
Okay. Thank you. That was it on that. Engineers' report, East Main Street Storm Sewer.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, yeah, East Main Street Storm Sewer, there's three items in your council packet there. The first one being a memorandum discussing the project, the second being a bid tabulation, and then the third ultimately will your, for your consideration, like, is a resolution to award the project and move forward construction. Again, the East Main Street Storm Sewer, that project, uh, two council meetings, I think it was, we approved the construction plans for that project. We all went out for bids for that project. Uh, that is for the storm sewer from the fire station running straight east along the north side of the railroad tracks that are ultimately to Maston Creek. That area's experienced a lot of frequent flooding in the area. There's also some water and sewer upgrades to upsize the, the undersized water and sewer in the area. It's actually gonna, also, the infrastructure's gonna tie into our Charm Highway 57 project that's planned in 2021. So, the bid results, as you can see, was bid on June 6th. The little bid was received from BCM Construction. It's a firm amount of fare bulk that we've done some work for in the past. Uh, the bid amount was nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents. I do have in there the opinion of probable construction cost, kind of as we went into this project, it was about eight hundred thousand. So, you can see we're, we're higher than, than what we were kind of anticipating. As I was talking to some contractors, we were, we were seeing the bids were gonna come in likely higher than what we were anticipating. We've seen that on a fair amount of our projects this year. And specifically reinforced concrete pipe, which we have a lot of on this job, has really come in higher due to some issues within the marketplace, is what we understand. So, we're slightly higher than we're anticipating, or significantly higher than we're anticipating. So, then when we ever have this sort of situation where I say, well, what can we done differently? Is there a scheduling problem? You can see in the project discussion there, ultimately, no contractors raised an issue with the schedule. If you may remember a past discussion we had, we approved the plans was to, to give some contractors some options. All the contractors really appreciated that and they ultimately didn't have any concerns with the schedule. So, I don't think the schedule, you know, caused a undue increase in the project cost. We received several competitive bids and you see the little bidder was slightly less than the group of the second, third, and fourth and even fifth bidder there. So, I think we had a good competitive project. I think everybody kind of understood the project. So, I think the, the costs are just higher than what we were anticipating. Rebidding at a later date, we can always, you know, plan on that. Uh, that's something that we can consider 'cause there's a, the council does have the, the ability to reject all bids and give us the direction on moving forward the project. But as we probably all know, everything goes up as time goes up and I think that's part of what we're seeing here. So, with that said, the, the staff talked about this and we kind of said, well, we gotta do it some point or we're just gonna continue flooding in that area. You may remember, we also looked at going straight south from the fire station, uh, through the Verizon County Road, uh, through the Hind ribbon concrete property. There's some issues there with contaminated soils, no easement, some other issues. And we kind of scrapped that three years when we first looked at this project. So, um, I don't have a, I don't, I don't have, I don't have any ideas on how to look at reducing this cost moving forward. I think that the costs are what we're gonna see and this is gonna be a, the lowest cost at this point to, to solve this problem and upgrade this infrastructure. So, that's why ultimately staff reviewed it and are recommending the council move forward awarding the project. If it's a project the council like to see, move forward to solve and get in that flooding in Storm Sewer. Problems along with the water and street that is undersized. And again, you do have the, the option to reject all bids and not proceed with the project or reject all bids and proceed with a modified schedule or scope of work. And again, I reviewed that with staff. We don't have any, you know, great ideas on, on what we can change 'cause everything we're doing, we need. We looked at different pipe material 'cause RCP reinforced concrete pipe is all of a sudden very expensive this year. We're not seeing, uh, some discounts in the piping material. So, some alternative materials, but due to the, the cover of the pipe working in the rail right away, we don't even think the rail even permitted. We're down on the flood plain. There's reasons to stick with the RCP pipe as opposed to smaller alternatives. We've kind of reviewed all those issues with staff and public works, so. The second item is, I kind of summarized the memo. Second item is the bid tab. Those are all the unit prices of the, the scope of work that we have. And then there is the resolution in the third item there to award and approve the project. And by passing the resolution, I authorized myself and city staff and the mayor to enter into a contract with the contractor. So, um, this is kind of the, I'd say the point of no return, but, uh, the point that the council needs to make a decision moving forward.
Thanks, Brandon. Nancy. So, where did we find the extra one each have? Is that in the storm?
The majority of all of it's in the storm. Now, we've had this project on the books for four or five years and we transferred five hundred, six hundred thousand over years ago and we've raised the rates. Right now, there's adequate funds in that, particularly to pay for this particular project. So, and then, um, due to those some increased sizing and water and storm, or water and sewer, they'll be paying an additional little bit for that upsizing too. But every, um, we should be very comfortable with the funds that we have right now.
Good, so, uh, thank you. Uh, it's a project that needs to get done. If last Wednesday, we were down there, as I was trying to leave work, there was the water pool was back under the stoplight going, so, and the water was pouring into the building to the east 'cause they didn't have their sandbags out, so, uh, it's a project that needs to get done, so. Any questions for Brandon or, or staff? Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution awarding the bid.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you for that, Brandon. Thank you. Second item tonight, your certificate of acceptance for the Blaine 11 Phase 4 subdivision. And that is also in your council packet. There's one sheet there, labeled certificate of acceptance. Just a quick refresher for the council. This is part of our, I'll call it the development process where we, when developers come to us for projects, we set up a development agreement. As part of that development agreement, we say, provide us with a certificate of acceptance. When you've completed the project, we go out there, give a punch list and then ultimately review it for completeness to make sure the project's done with public works and present this certificate of acceptance to you, to the council. By accepting this certificate of acceptance, that would start the one-year warranty period that's part of the development agreement and we're sure that's in place. And then the public works would go out a year from now to review the site and see if there's any warranty items that we would go back to the contractor to fix up. So, that's what the certificate of acceptance is. Happy to answer any questions you may have on that. Again, that's for Blaine 11, just east of Fair Ground, south of the school there, East of Fifth Avenue. Any questions for Brandon? Okay, I'm gonna take a motion.
I'm willing to accept.
Thanks, Duane. Second?
I'll second that.
Things down, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Next one.
Yep. Uh, next one's almost the same as the first one. That's for another, again, another residential subdivision, Houston's first subdivision. Same thing there. We reviewed it, asking you to accept that for the one-year warranty period. And then there's two other items within that agreement. It's just slightly different here. There's a slightly new wrinkle. There's a settlement release agreement. Uh, that's between the developer and the city. During construction, uh, type of water material or thickness of water main material was slightly less of a thin wall or thinner wall than what was proposed. Um, was in place, kind of through all the projects, we said, all right, what do we do? We ultimately recommended, our work through with the, the contractor and the developer, to, uh, take a ten thousand dollar settlement due to that thinner wall pipe as part of this release. One of the things we considered was, well, do we go rip it all up? Is that the right thing to do or find out where it was thinner wall? And this thinner wall pipe, uh, it's not a, a big concern on our side of things because it was previously used. You know, it is used for water main throughout the area. Uh, it just was a little bit thinner than what we had proposed. So, we don't, uh, you know, we ultimately recommend moving forward the settlement release. Uh, we thought that was fair from kind of all sides to, to have that release. The third item there is a memorandum. Uh, it's part of the development agreement with the developer. Uh, there was a need to provide water main upsizing in the area. This Houston subdivision's just north this Blaine area here, uh, south of the school, East of Fifth Avenue, East of Fair Grounds there. Uh, we're expecting some significant, we're all, scroll, excuse me, to the east, uh, from that area. So, we ultimately looked at our water main system and said, we needed to go upsize the water main through this area from an eight inch, which is kind of standard size, to a twelve inch, I believe it was. And then part of that development agreement agreed to pay for that upsizing. Developer installed a larger pipe. Larger pipe costs more. We've agreed to, to reimburse developer for those costs. So, those are the, the three items that are, that are in there. By approving all three, uh, this certificate of acceptance, the settlement release and the memorandum would ultimately approve the transaction as part of the settlement release payment from the developer and then vice versa, there'll be the other payment through the memorandum from the city to the developer. The developer's already incurred that cost and installed the upsized water main.
Questions for Brandon? I'm assuming the extra cost comes out of the sewer water enterprise funds, okay.
Is, is the thickness of that too marginally different? I mean, what's... Eight inch, quarter inch?
What used to happen is the, the stuff that was installed, they used to tap it into the side of the plastic and then the corpse used to pull out. So, we, we used to, used to install it that way. So, we abandoned that and put saddles on now that actually hold the water main, uh, the corp on the water main. So, really the issue's gone away. We just left the thicker wall pipe in there. Um, is, is really, really the, the nuts and bolts of it. So, we have the saddles and they're still hold that corp in there, so.
And it isn't like, there are, there are towns that do use DR 25.
Yep.
It's not like something that isn't used.
Correct.
Right.
Just we did have to specify, so.
Right.
And it is also up and functioning, so subdivision's being built out, being, you know, the water main's open tapped. We haven't seen any issues with it, so.
Any other questions? I'm gonna take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Yes, you have.
Thank you. Thanks, Brandon. Appreciate it. Okay, let's see, personnel. We moved item one to the closed session. Number two, update emergency services committee meeting.
Okay, so, we all got together. I think the only person that was missing was from the ambulance. But it was basically just kickoff, just to get our feet wet, to meet, to understand what everybody can and cannot talk about. Of course, the issue was brought up about a new fire hall. And we kind of told him what we thought made it to happen, what he needed to do. Because the first question I asked is if he had went any further with the repairs, getting prices for the repairs he expects to do on the fire hall. He's still looking into that. The other thing is the police department is looking toward hiring two full-time employees next year. They're still working that out. Uh, with the hiring of the two full-time employees, there'd be less part-time employees. 'Cause the state doesn't have a part-time license anymore. It's just full-time. So, these part-time guys have to work in the other towns and the scheduling is a problem with the part-time people. If they've already scheduled in another town, it's hard to get them scheduled here. So, they're just, that's something they're looking at. Uh, there was a few other things, some vehicles and that, but we're kind of moving into this slowly and we are going to meet again July 30th. So, hopefully it'll become more productive as we move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Tony? Thanks, Tony. Number three, Mike Harding resignation as a part-time police officer resigning as of May 31st. So, we're thanking for his service and best of luck. I was in the career in Rochester. And then number four, we added... Oh, we have to add one. Oh, yep, that's my...
I'm willing to accept since he's gone.
I'll second that.
I'm so sorry, I missed, I, I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries. Number four was added. That was library assistant, hiring of a gentleman named David Greenfield for grade three step two, which would lead to sixteen sixty-three an hour. So, that was recommended by the library board last night at their meeting that the council would approve that hire for tonight.
Full-time?
Full-time. Yeah. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Thanks, Duane. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Patent, this is the personnel. Attorney's report. Number one, the Espo agreement for Stone Ridge 2nd.
Okay. Well, as you will recall, Mr. Murray came to us and have proposed, uh, Stone Ridge 2nd subdivision. He's entered into a development agreement with regard to that, that is substantially similar to the... to the development agreements that we've been using for the last two to three years. Because of, and I can have, I can have Mike speak to that, he's asked for the reasons that he's asking for that. He's asked that the city consider an escrow agreement, and those are my words, not his words, but an agreement to allow the security required by the development agreement for the city. So the city wants to make sure that the public infrastructure that's going into this subdivision is done, gets completed, and gets completed correctly, because ultimately, it's going to be turned over to the city at the end of the day. So we have these provisions in our development agreements that require either an irrevocable letter of credit, so that if something is either not finished or not finished correctly, the city can go access those funds, step into the place of the developer, finish the development, so that we ultimately have a development there that we can use and isn't sitting empty, sitting vacant. What Mike's request was, is because I have funds available that are provided through my lender, can we kind of piggyback on the city's security with those funds instead of providing essentially a separate letter of credit? He's asking, can we, can we piggyback with those funds? So we had some discussions about that, and we even prepared and put together kind of a rough draft of that agreement. We weren't able to agree on all of the finer points of that. And I think you may have, Linda, they were provided a copy of the initial draft of that escrow agreement, I think, correct? It would have been on Monday.
Okay. I believe, was that in your packet?
Yes, it's in the drop box. Okay. We, like I said, we weren't able to agree on all of the points of that, and I can let Mike and Tom speak to that as well. One of the concerns that I have about, well, there were a couple of concerns. The provision as far as having the city engineer approve draw requests. If the lender is going to hang on to the funds until they need to be drawn, and it makes sense to do that, because then you don't pay interest on those until you're actually using them. But if the lender is going to hang on to those funds, the city, in order to protect ourselves in the way that we've done with other developments, would have to have the agreement say that we could access those funds. And I think Mike's concern is making sure that there are some checks and balances in place on the city's end to accomplish that. But again, we just haven't been able to reach an agreement on those finer points. So like I said, we've sort of gone some of the way down this road, exploring this option, but we haven't been able to button up all the details about it yet. When I reached out to Brandon, he had, he's got a couple of concerns, specifically that really short turnaround time as far as approval of draw requests. You would be looking for something more like 30 days, and maybe shortening that up to 15, but the three business-day turnaround is just not going to be workable. So in having that discussion with Brandon, we were coming back around again to the direction that the city has given to the engineer and the attorney as far as making sure that the city's interests are protected when we're, you know, entering into and when we're having this development in the city. So that's something that we wanted to bring back up. The irrevocable letter of credit or the escrow, it is in the city's control. The city has the ability to, without going to court and ask for the judge's permission to do this, they have the ability to, to access those funds in, you know, in the event of the development, if there's been a breach of the development agreement. And I know, Mike, in the email that you had sent yesterday, you had some concerns about, you know, having yet another layer of oversight, because you've got an engineer on the job, your bank, your escrow agent. But I, you know, the city's response to that is, the city needs to have some of its own control over that security. So, I don't know, does that, can I kick it to you? Do you have any thoughts about this?
No, I think that would sums it up.
So the, we've also gotten a request for a contractor's performance bond in lieu of the letter of credit or the escrow. And we haven't done that with other developers in the past. Again, the city's direction is, from what I understand, to the engineer has been, you know, protect us and put us in the best position possible. So their recommendation has been the escrow and the letter of credit, because the performance bonds are more difficult to deal with in the event that we would need to step in and do something and, you know, step into the place of the developer to finish this project or to make sure that it was done correctly. It's far easier to access those funds if it's an escrow account or a letter of credit.
I just have one question.
Sure.
On number six in the agreement there, we're just, and that's just what confused me, maybe this is common, I didn't know that, but so as the city, we wouldn't have to prove that something was not correct. We could just go take money out of the line of credit and say, "We don't think it's correct here, it is," and they would have to sue us to get it back, but we don't have to prove that anything's wrong. I guess that's just bother me as a, as a developer, I'd be like, "Well, what if I disagree that I think it is correct?" We wouldn't have to prove that it was.
Well, he would have an opportunity to come and address the council and explain his position about why he didn't think that it's a, you know, that we only have the ability to do that in the event that there's a breach of the development agreement. That's what triggers our ability to access the security that we've asked for, so.
But when is that determined that there's been a breach?
The city would determine, either, either the designated representative, the zoning administrator, or the city council itself would be the ones to determine when there was an event of default.
Okay, but that process isn't spelled out in this at all. That's, that's my issue, is that there's no process here to, you know, when, because this is the nuclear option. I mean, this is when everything goes really bad.
Right. Yep.
This happens, but there's no process spelled out. So from my perspective, this is just a wide open, you know, my checkbook is in your pocket now.
Well, I think you'd have to read this in conjunction with the development agreement, because the development agreement outlines, you know, what is an event of default and what the city's obligations and rights are in the event that there is such a default. So I, and that part of it, if we're just talking about adding, outlining what process it is, I think that we can, we could add that. The problem is, is I wasn't going to try and add a bunch of language to that if it's not an option for us anyways on the timing.
I'm going to double it up, I understand that.
Yep.
At the same time, Tom's bank examiner has to be able to look at this and be okay with it as well, because this opens the bank up to doubling the project. I mean, instead of an $800,000 project, now it's a $1.6 million project, because they have to be able to fund it twice, essentially.
Maybe, so maybe on this point, I could jump in. I was, I was actually going to speak less to negotiating this agreement, but, so we, you know, from a bank perspective, we think that the city of Cassin's a great place to invest. We think Cassin is growing, and we think it's a great community. And so we're hoping to be doing more, more developments than we thought. This was kind of our first time running, running into this kind of, this version of your development agreements. So anyways, it was, as we've been working on it, we're working our way through this, we've realized that we are, there's basically three options on the table that we're aware of, which is the first, which is to have funds in escrow with the city. The second would be to have the irrevocable standby letter of credit. And then the third option is kind of this, this escrow agreement, which is to more or less create a letter, irrevocable letter of credit that ties in with existing loan funds, to kind of piggyback, like Attorney Left had mentioned. So the main bank concern that was raised, and that our president wanted me to come and talk about, is this, this issue with safety and soundness. So we are allowed to have a certain amount of funds out in the world based on the current value of the collateral at the time those funds are released. And so if we were to let the funds go all at once, we technically have collateral of raw land. And that raw land isn't as valuable as it will be at the end of the project. So usually, what happens is the work is done a little bit, and then we get an invoice, and then there's a draw request proportional to that, to that invoice. And so funds are then put out because this work has already been done, and then there's proportional collateral, value collateral, there's proportional improvements to the collateral to the amount of money that's now out in the world. And so we're, we're basically, we're regulated based on probabilities of exposure, less than whether, like, I could, if I had an examiner in my office or our compliance officer and I said, "But I trust the city of Cassin," they would say, "We don't care. You have opened yourself up to a possibility of exposure." So that's kind of where we're stuck, is that's how we're regulated. So that's where we're stuck on, we, the full, the full escrow amount, in addition to the interest element, that becomes a very expensive option. The, the second point that Mike was making is if we did, the way the agreement reads, we read it as 100% of construction costs, which would include not only public infrastructure, but kind of everything that Mike is doing, like grading of the dirt and all that. And so we're looking at it as we need to have a separate letter of credit, which then Mike is also on the hook for, because I didn't understand that the city wanted the letter of credit. It would be a letter of credit to the city's benefit in lieu of Mike's loan, which means that we would basically have two loans against Mike against the single subdivision, as opposed to a letter of credit directly to the city, more for the purpose of dealing with this subdivision. That would be a separate conversation that becomes possible, but we haven't really dealt into that. So anyways, that's kind of where, where our understanding is. And so those two sets of, kind of those two realities there create kind of a safety and soundness concern based on the proportion of our, our exposure of dollars out in the world at the actual moment value of collateral. So that's where there, the performance bond usually comes into play, just because it's an option that is workable, it is harder, and I think, to use Mike's words, it's, there's, there are checks and balances kind of to go through that process, but we usually use it because it gets us around the safety and soundness concerns. But anyways, we, so we want to be investing and financing these kind of developments at an especially critical time, I think, in terms of getting more lots on the, in the supply for the city of Cassin, and we like working with Cassin, we like investing in Cassin. It's just kind of, yeah, like Melanie was saying, it's a matter of kind of buttoning up some of these details on how, to make sure that everybody's risk and everybody's, everybody's rules are being met properly. And so we're kind of trying to flesh out our, how this would look for our safety and soundness. But I think our, our main thing is we want to say, we want to work through that process. We want the city to be able to have step-by-step approval, whatever that looks like, over the infrastructure, because when you got, what we don't want to have happen is we get all the way to the end of the project, and we find out that the wrong type of gravel is the wrong thickness of the tubes at the underground, you know, 10 feet underground were used, and then say, "Well, tear it all out and start over." You know, we don't, so we, we would hate for that to happen. We want to have city, city approval, everything to be up to city specs. It's a question of how do we get there to make sure that everybody's rules and everybody's risks are being...
Am I, am I hearing you say that, is it an issue for you as a lender that the city has the ability, or is that more of just Mike's concern? It's not your concern as a lender that the city would be able to draw upon those funds?
It's the, as a lender, that, so as a lender, it's the, the timing in which we have money going out, so we don't, when I got, the agreement that I got basically says, "You could draw funds before improvements are made." And then secondly, it doesn't actually, it probably might say in the full development agreement that funds would then, in that instance, need to be used to pay an invoice of an improvement in the subdivision. But those were, those two things for us would need to be spelled out, that the improvement has been made, the draw has then gone out, and that we need to just have proof of this invoice or proof of the improvements being made, so that we have proportional improvements to the amount of money that's out there, because we have to kind of tag along with the collateral value.
So if I'm hearing you, you're not saying that you are okay with the provision that the city is allowed to access those funds, it's just you want to make sure that they're being used to pay for actual work done on this development?
Yeah, it's the process of how those funds are accessed, right? So that's, to your, to your end, it's that we need to know, we need to know and have proof that it's gone, that it's going to this, we need to know the invoice like we would with a normal draw, but we just need to, to make sure that we're matching our source of funds to the use of the funds.
I can keep talking, but does anybody else want to jump in? You look like you wanted to say something, Ryan.
I mean, the funds that we're looking for to be able to get at, if, not saying you, Mike, but if the contractor doesn't put in the water main, doesn't finish putting in the water main, we need the funds to be able to finish that project if it should go tits up or something. The bank is saying that they want it done before, sorry, before, they, they want the project done before they will release funds.
And that's what...
Yeah, that's how I understand it.
Yeah.
We want to be able to...
But we wouldn't be able to do that part of it without those funds.
But we could, I don't know how it works, but you're, you're in the contract business. They say this contractor doesn't finish the water main, we come in and say, "Well, this needs to be finished." The contractor says, "Yeah, we're walking away, we're done." We could hire X, Y, Z company to come put the water main in, they'll give us an invoice, and we take that and get paid for it, because we know we have the money for it. We wouldn't necessarily need the money and go, "Here, contractor, I'm going to pay you cash upfront," because we want to make sure whatever work was done correctly, we would pay for it. So we'd have an invoice for that draw.
But would there still be money in the escrow after he walked away and said, "I'm done," and he just walks away from the bank? Would there be money in the bank?
But let's back up, though, because if the work isn't completed, it's not going to be paid the first time.
Right.
So it's, it's already...
We don't know that. That's where we're muddying up. Mike's financial...
Well, see, but, okay, how wouldn't, how wouldn't you know that, though? Because you're going to be inspecting it, so, and you're going to be approving the draw request, so.
So in any way...
See, and that's where, to me...
But if the work is not done correctly, that's, that's a concern. So it's possible that the work could have already been paid for, and the city finds out later that it's not done correctly. I mean, it's a possibility.
Well, no, that would be more of a warranty issue that we're talking about. So I think we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about completion and warranty. And the warranty we're covering with the letter of credit, what we're proposing to.
When you get down to the point of acceptance.
Right.
So...
The 10%.
And now, I'll go to the agreement here. So it talks about draws and approving draws. I don't think really the city would be approving the draws. The city, and what we've done for all the other development agreements, typically, it's a letter of credit. We reduce that letter of credit, so then in turn, we send a letter to Teresa, who sends it on to the banks to say, "The city's okay with reducing your letter of credit." In this case, we would provide a letter to say, "10% of the project's done, reduce Mike's escrow 10%." And now, whether you guys do draw and how you guys pay your contractor, I don't think the city should be privy to that, or it should be, "We're not approving your payments," because we have some developers that do their own work.
But that was...
We have other developers that provide letter of credits and have on all the other projects, so.
Well, in this, though, you were going to be approving payments.
Well, that was, that was your...
Approving reductions in the city's escrow amount that's needed to be held at the bank. And we can put, we send letters to say, "Mike's 10% done."
I misunderstood that, because I thought you were going to be approving draws.
No, I, that's up to you guys, or you fund your project. No, I, that's up to you guys, or you fund your project, which, I think they're going to parallel pretty dang close. You may have some time in, in here, but I, I'm not going to be approving draws to your contractors. That's a private agreement.
Okay.
The city's surety slowly lies in that escrow account, to make sure there's enough in that escrow account to cover us from construction. We do the same thing for security deposits, I mean, security deposit, letter of credits. Where if it starts out a million, we get twenty percent done, we reduce it to twenty percent, all the way down to that ten percent at the bottom, through the warranty period. And then whatever agreement you have, whatever draw scenario, that's up to you guys. And we're happy to, you know, whenever you send us a request, your engineer will send a request, we have this much done. Yep, looks good, we'll, we'll agree to that amount.
Okay.
So they, they can be right with each other, but we're not going to directly approve your withdrawals or draws on the letter of credit. Or draws on the escrow account.
Because it's a private project.
We, again, we have some developers, plenty of other letters of credit.
That was my first objection.
We have Scott Lampley does the work himself. We're not in the business of what other private agreements are in place.
When you guys take all the letter, or when the letter of credit's put on the books, who's on the hook for the letter? Let's say you guys draw two-hundred thousand, to some, you know, things go, things go sideways, you end up taking out two-hundred thousand, fix the water main, who's on the hook to pay that two-hundred thousand back? The developer.
Yeah, it's a letter of credit for the developer.
Okay.
So are we on the same page now? Because it sounds like we weren't quite all on the same page to begin with.
Yeah, unfortunately, Brandon wasn't able to be part of that meeting with us the other day. Otherwise, we might have been able to hammer some of those things out.
I think by number four, we've, I think we've cleared that hurdle.
And what I would call the escrow until, we call it reduce, the letter of credit. If, what we typically deal with, we reduce that letter of credit, authorize that, and the bank can reduce that letter of credit, release it to you, Mike, or obviously your contractor as you move along. And we're fine with doing that. Now, the three days, I, I don't want to go on vacation for three days, and then you send me a request to put down a letter of credit ten percent, and then I miss it, you know, that, that's fair and reasonable. But we're fine, and so I think we've done a couple, you know, letter of credit reductions as we go, and send them on, and we approve, and it's a pretty simple, boilerplate letter that we have. And then the bank approves it, and we reduce it as we go. And staff, I understand, if staff has it authorized, they should do what we've done on past projects. Again, the, to me, the number six there, it says, written demand of the authorized agent of the city. To me, that would be, I don't feel like I'd be an authorized agent or the administrator would, that that would be by council resolution. We would bring it back to the council and say, we have a development agreement that has certain requirements regarding warranty and remedy of default materials. Council, do you think we should pull the letter, or escrow in this case?
Does that give you the assurance that you were looking for in paragraph six one? If it's instead of just saying that upon, you know, written demand of an authorized agent upon resolution of the city?
I'm fine with that, as long as the bank is fine with that. If I'm that tall, they could then.
If that, I'd say that, that element of it, in terms of the process of approval of that, I, I would feel more comfortable with in terms of council resolution versus, I, I think that's a more specific process. So, and then I, I think as far as to, to the, to the point of, yeah, kind of the step-by-step, I, I think, um, let, let me ask if, I, I need to ask our loan committee if it's possible to have tethering between our two, our letter of credit and our loan to, as you guys reduce, reduce the amount of more or less restricted restrictions on, on our loan. You know, so anyways, that's, that's for us to figure out. But I, I think that, to me, makes a lot more sense. I see where you're coming from.
Yeah, and the other thing you guys are probably worried about is how that ties to paying to your contractor, and contractors being paid in a timely manner, and having issues there.
That was where I had the issue with. I was under the understanding that you were actually going to be reviewing our pay draw, or our pay request.
It could be to provide that letter of credit reduction.
Right.
To the bank, so the bank knows that we're okay with it.
As far as me paying the contractor, you're not having that.
At the end of the day, no.
Right. And that, that was an issue that I had, just because of the timing of it. I know, I mean, I want to pay him as quickly as we can and make sure that that all happens, so.
Okay. Is there anybody we can put something together, then get between the two parties and bring that back? Good, all right. Thank you. The credit, uh, thank you. We're going to go into closed session now for litigation and real estate update, as well as a personnel committee discussion, and we'll open the meeting as soon as we're done. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I can.
Do you want to talk or?
I'll call you.
Thank you.
And then I'll turn it back on when we talk about real estate.
Personnel, personnel.
Uh, does personnel also get recorded? I think it's more attorney-client portion of the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Regarding, regarding the I V E W.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Covering the union.
And that doesn't need to be included.
Yeah, hold for, stick to the union stuff and not report it.
So we're not recording now?